The purpose is committee. It's seven o'clock was just gone seven o'clock will make a start. Could I ask you if you're not speaking to turn your mics on to silent? And indicate when you want to speak by coming off of silent, telling me who you are. I'll write your name down and call you when you are due. Okie dokie. Hopefully you've all got copies of the agenda. Okay, so we go on to agenda item one apologies. Have you got any apologies for absence?
We do, councillor, sorry, councillor Knight and councillor Moore.
Okay councillor Knight and councillor Moore. Any others? No. Move on to agenda item two declarations of interest. To receive any declarations of interest, are there any people, any members who wish to declare an interest?
Councillor Nixey.
And what agenda is that councillor Nixey?
Sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me because I'm on my phone, I'm afraid, but it's to do with the allotment. And just to mention that I was the person, I was a councillor that introduced the landowner to the council, but there's no benefit to me whether it's financial or otherwise with regards to other than that. It was just to put two people together.
But he is a personal friend of yours, isn't he?
Yes.
Yes, well, then you should recuse yourself from the debate and voting if there is a vote.
Voting, yes, debate, I'd like to be involved in if I may as a councillor.
No. If you are, if he is a personal friend, yeah, then you are, have a personal interest in the actual agenda item. It is not whether or not you're, I'm not suggesting there's anything untoward with you at all.
I understand that.
It's whether, it's whether the casual observer, knowing your circumstances, may come to the conclusion that you have a personal interest. Town clerk, is this correct? Come off of mute, come off of mute, Richard.
Yes, I have, it's all right, come off the mute. Yes, I think you probably are correct. I think councillor Nixey didn't take part in the debate when the council decided to agree in principle.
No, I was absolutely convinced.
I think it would be wise for her not to take part in the debate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councillor Nixey, that's item five.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Some of these screens, you can only get one page up at a time. Mine's just died, it's got Eileen.
Stuart, Stuart, can you go off mute please? You're, you're talking over everybody.
Ah, it's working now. Yeah, sorry, I was talking to.
Yeah, I know, but can you go off mute please?
I'm just trying to.
Okay, excellent. Right. We go on to agenda item three approval of minutes of previous meetings. The FNG meeting on the 25th of November. I propose, is there a second up?
Seconded.
Councillor Edrington. Councillor Edrington is second. Minutes of the FNGP meeting on the 7th of October 2020. I propose from the chair, is there a second up?
Seconded.
Who was that speaking?
Councillor Rzeszewski.
Councillor Rzeszewski is seconding, thank you. We move on to agenda item four, the budget. I think that's the deputy town clerk, is that correct?
Chairman, I believe the town clerk wanted to say something.
Town clerk.
Thank you.
I will just say a general point here. The, you have the figures from the deputy town clerk and she has given you a run through of almost everything. What we faced at the moment is that if we had a, a, a zero percent increase on the precept, we would actually generate less money than we did last year. Lost about 20,000, just under 20,000 pounds in, in, in income because of it. I mean, this particular part of the world does suffer quite a lot from the discounts as, as the chairman knows. So what we're really suggesting or recommending to the committee and therefore the council later on, is that we go for a situation whereby we increase the precept a little bit by 2%, which will actually raise just about what we were able to spend last year by, by, by an addition, except for an additional one around about a thousand pounds. So we've lost.
Richard, Richard, did you go through the items as they are out written down in the agenda, please? That's later in the agenda. The first agenda.
I'm giving you the general, I'm giving you the general picture.
Good.
Because I think that's important. Right, well, look, I have already said the preset for last year was raised 91, the preset for 2021 recommendation is an overall preset of 94,000, 941,003 pounds. That will raise about a thousand pounds more than last year. We've had a VAT refund. The general income has dropped quite considerably, as you can see, it's only now 13,000 because we've given, we haven't got any rents coming, so many rents coming in, the VIC etcetera, etcetera. Chamber hire is nil, allotments, that's still going quite well at 18,000. And then we move on to the budget allocations and staff costs. The budget was 330,000, so far we've spent 246,000. The reason why there is quite a, and there's still another month to go yet, the reason why there is a, because we've actually two staff members down. So we haven't got a driver or a town sergeant at the moment. And we haven't got a VIC manager at the moment. So that's part of the reason why we're a little bit down than where we were last year in terms of expenditure. So we, that's going on. Administration, that's as you can see, IT telecom station, etcetera. We're actually doing quite well. We are, we're current outturn is 18,944. Now, I, I will caution you in that that was the last quarter. It's now, you know, there's still another quarter to go, but that's just under 50, half 50%. The recommendation is to just increase that by 2% to allow for inflation, etcetera, etcetera, because we.
Richard, 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 can you slow down a minute? The reality is I've got the agenda in front of me. After what we talked about, about the preset for last year is a recommendation from the amenities and environmental committee about the charging for the allotments. That's the decision members have to come to next. That's the next item on this particular agenda item. So if we can take them in turns.
Chairman, why don't you introduce the bits you want to hear and I will give you the information. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to go through this.
It's not the bits I want to hear, it's the actual order in which they're written on the agenda.
Right, okay then.
The next agenda item is the recommendation from the amenities and allotments committee about the costing of the allotments, including the water fees. At the moment, it's 22 pounds for a quarter, 44 pounds for a half plot and 88 pounds for a whole plot.
Right. That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation, which is in actual fact, no increase.
Exactly.
Now, do members wish to discuss this? Is there a proposal for this particular recommendation?
I'll propose that, that's councillor Rzeszewski.
Councillor Stuart Piper.
Thank you, Chair, I just put my hand up to propose formally no increase.
Okay, is there a second up?
Seconded councillor Rzeszewski.
Secondly by councillor Rzeszewski, is there a debate? Please speak if you wish to debate, no. Anybody against that proposal? Then it is the member's decision to not increase the fees for the allotments for next year.
Right.
Okay. Now we go on to staff costs.
Right. You can see the budget outturn, the budget for that year is, at the moment is 330,000. We have spent 246,317. What I would then suggest you, I have told you why there's an underspend because there are two members of staff we haven't got. If by the spring everything starts happening, we will have to appoint two members of staff. And there's the apprentice to be paid for as well, which the council was already authorised. So there will be an increase. We haven't put anything for staff remuneration, that comes under a confidential thing. And I shall talk about that, well, I won't talk about it, but I shall give you the process from which you, you can make a decision on that. So I don't think you can actually, we, we can't set the budget until we know what the staff remuneration thing is going to be.
Okay, we'll deal with that under pink right at the end. Administration, there's a recommendation here for increase of 2% from 30,000 to 30,600. This includes equipment, IT and telecoms, stationery, subscriptions and the office. Is there a proposer for the 2% increase? Jane Etherington, councillor Etherington is proposing, Heatherington, sorry. Is there a second up?
Yeah, I'll second that, Chair, councillor.
2% increase in the administration budget. 2% increase is agreed by members unanimously. Thank you. We now go on to RTC property, town clerk.
Yep. The 21, 21 budget or 2021 budget was 160,000 and included custom house 105. Well, you can see Radford House at 30,000, Charlotte Court 5,000, Albion Gardens at 20,000 and the sinking fund, which is repair funds. We've got to think of a repair fund, not only for custom house anymore, but also for the, for the gardens, well, for the Charlotte Court and, and for Radford House. Now, I have to put something in for Albion Gardens, that's an item that comes up under the confidential thing. But we have to put something in there to cope with that. Well, we would, we assumed by now we would actually have Albion Gardens. A current expenditure is 54,275 and custom house, including 40,000 rent paid, 7,000 pounds for painting, 20,000 for the Radford House and 1,492 pounds 27 for Charlotte Court and 282 pounds for total expenditure of 84,317. Radford House will cost a load more money in a year and certainly this year. That's not going to be accounted for, that has to be, that will be a capital expenditure. These are revenue costs, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. The recommendation is to increase it to 163,200 because we expect to get, I think, last year was an aberration on all these budgets and we have to be mindful of our usual, if it's a usual year, we'll be doing things hopefully, in which case we're suggesting just to keep up with the rate of inflation, as it were, or anything else, that if we budgeted 160,000 last year, we should budget 163,000 to 2%, which will increase it to 163,200 and an increase of 3,200 overall.
Okay, members, there's a proposal to increase this budget by 2%. As has been mentioned, 163,200, is there a proposer?
I'll propose that, councillor Rzeszewski.
Councillor Rzeszewski is proposing and I'll second it from the chair. Members wish to debate? Silence is golden. Is there anybody opposed to this particular increase? Silence is golden again, that's a unanimous agreement, increase of 2% to 163,200 for RTC property. We now move on to storage and vehicles, town clerk.
Right, and the 2021 budget, we allowed 50,000 the purchase of new vehicles and these were the floats which are now operating, up to 35,000 and 15,000 in revenue and 13,000, we actually spent 13,953 pounds 26. Revenue is, we, we think the revenue side should be increased by 2%. I will, because I know about this one quite with some detail, the diesel van we've got is got a hell of a lot of miles on it because it actually ran up and down to Ashford, delivering food all over the place. It's starting to cost us money in terms of repair. I'm recommending that we lease purchase a new one and I'm, KCC have got an electric van scheme whereby they'll lend you a van for a period of time to see how you get on with one. I'm just wondering whether we should go all electric and have an electric, and have an electric van. We've got two floats and have an electric van to go with it. But it's an open idea, I'm, I'm still thinking about that, on the practicalities of them. But I don't really know how the new vans work, how, how well, how good they are. So if we get to borrow one, we can see how it would operate in real life, which I think is important before we went 100% electric. But the recommendation is a 2% increase to 15,300 on the revenue side. You can forget.
Okay, on the revenue side, there's a recommendation for an increase of 2%. Is there a proposer?
Yeah, I'll propose that, Chair.
That's councillor Albin, is there a second there on CJ, councillor Heatherington's hand in the air? Anybody wish to debate this? Silence is golden. Anybody opposed to this 2% increase? That's unanimously agreed, 2% increase in storage and vehicles. Allotments.
That was to go for toilets and the rest of which still haven't been built. Well, obviously you can see why that is. What we actually spent was 12,809 in revenue and 174 pounds in capital, a total of 12,893. The recommendation is the budget should remain at 18,000, no increase.
Okay, there's a recommendation of no increase in expenditure for the allotments on the budget of 18,000. I propose from the chair, is there a second up?
Seconded councillor Rzeszewski.
Councillor Rzeszewski seconds. Is there anybody wish to debate this? Silence is golden. Therefore, any members against no increase? That's agreed unanimously, no increase, so it remains at 18,000 for allotments. Democracy, we can bang, get rid of that. Richard.
Democracy. The budget was 15,000, we spent zero, but we have to keep money aside. There will be at least one, possibly more by elections that we will have to pay for. And we also have to think in two years' time, we would be paying for a, a full set of elections, which would cost us 25 grand or thereabouts, as they did last year. So as you know, we've thrown these things in. And democracy also covers other things such as meetings and all the rest of it. So the recommendation there is a 2% to bring that up to 15,300.
Okay, members, there's a recommendation to increase by 2%. Is there a proposer? Councillor Heatherington is proposing, I'll second from the chair. Do members wish to debate? Please speak if you do.
I have a question on that.
Second.
Chair, councillor Rzeszewski, yes. If we've not, not used a budget in that, we should have a surplus already. Is there any reason why we should be sticking it up 2% when our surplus should be a damn sight more than 2% already? Thank you.
It's because we're talking about expenditure for this year. This, all this money that we didn't spend will grow into the, will go into the reserves and, and it'll be helpful. I don't know what expenditure we're going to be doing this year, but I suggest, I would suggest that because the way things have come out, in order to, for the, basically for the town to come out of it, we're going to have to spend a lot of money, a lot more than we would normally spend. Yes, we've saved some money from last year, but we were going to spend a lot of money, we will be spending a lot of money, probably more, money more on events and very more of other things in order to bring people into the town. So, and, and so as far as that's concerned, yes, okay. If you want to keep the budget, if you want to go for 0%, do that. But I don't think that's really going to make a lot of difference. We're talking about 300 quid here. So, but we do need to keep on the democracy side of things because we've still had meetings, there's a town meeting to be funded, there'll probably be, it can also mean consultations of various sorts and the rest of it, because that all comes out of here and, and also notice boards and public engagement of every sort. That's going to increase, there's no doubting about that. This year it's all been, you know, we've been living in our rooms and, and talking to each other. That's not going to be the situation, hopefully it's not going to be in the situation in the, in the, in the months to come. So all I'm saying is, there's, I see no harm in just increasing it a slight bit just to keep it up.
Okay, Richard, thank you. There's been a proposer and a second up. Apart from councillor Rzeszewski, is there any other debate wish to take, please?
Yes, please, Chair.
Councillor Green.
As this is something that we pay into every year, because we know we're going to get expenditure every four years, shouldn't we be setting up a local democracy reserve so that it's clear what we're doing?
Not really, well, yes, you can do, but all it just means is you're, you're, it only comes out of two, two bank accounts. And how you divide up those bank accounts is really, to a certain extent, immaterial. But you can, we can just, we, we can just sort of calculate and put them on a, you know, a great big long list of fixed budgets, if you like, or, or fixed purpose budgets within it. But then if we come to a situation at the end of the year, when you really want to do something and you've got the actual money that we can use is, is limited, the tendency is to look at budgets that have money that isn't, is sitting there, they're not actually doing anything and, and wire it out to other things. So I'm, I'm just wondering, for operational purposes, I don't think it makes much difference. But if you really want to do that, I, I'm no objection.
Yeah, well, in the election process to start a, a new fund, that may be considered perhaps after the next election, whether or not a separate fund is set aside for democracy. It goes back into the, in the, in the reserves anyway, as long as we allocate the monies and we know it's there, it's there and we've allocated for it. It's been proposed and seconded. Any members against this increase?
I'm abstaining, Chair, councillor Rzeszewski.
Sorry?
I'd like to abstain councillor Rzeszewski.
Councillor Rzeszewski abstains. Apart from that, all other members agree, an increase of 2% in democracy. Finance.
Yeah, well, we've overspent on this because we, we included an accounts budget and all the rest of it. So even though we have expended, our expenditure this year was actually quite a bit more, it was 1,074 so far this year. We're still only recommending a 2% increase. So as I say, when you look at the budgets overall, it's only 2%, but there will be ones like this where we considerably overspent and we may need to go buy money out from the reserves or rest of it in order to top it up, if that's what you want to do. But with the recommendation is 2%, a 240 pound increase on the year.
Right, there's a recommendation for a 2% increase in finance. Is there a proposer? I propose from the chair.
I'll propose that, Chair.
Seconded by councillor Albin. Is anybody, does anybody wish to debate this agenda item? No? Anybody opposed to the 2% increase? That's unanimously agreed then. We now move on to civic. Civic, a civic budget.
The budget set last year was 15,000, we've only spent 3,881 pounds 88. That might go up a little bit, but the recommendation is to a 0% increase, a standstill budget.
Okay, there's a recommendation for a standstill budget. I propose from the chair, is there a second for that?
Rzeszewski.
Councillor Rzeszewski is seconded it. Anybody wish to debate? Okay, members, are members agreed? Those opposed to a standstill, please speak now. It's agreed that the civic budget remain at 15,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Who's that?
Mr. Chairman. Could I just, with your permission, at this point, offer the councils thanks to our mayor who has continued to get herself out and about, supporting all kinds of things without a town sergeant, without a driver to move her around. And just like to say, she's done a fabulous job and would like to just say thank you to her really, in the public format.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm sure that's, sorry councillor Etherington.
Yeah, I was just going to agree with 3,500.
There's terrible reception on this particular teams, it's nowhere near as good as Zoom. Anyway, by the way, we now move on to town promotion.
Right. The budget for 2021 was 6,500. Would you like me to break the current expenditure?
Richard, 60,500.
Yeah, 60,500, that's exactly what I said.
No, you said 1,500.
No, no, 60,500. The current expenditure is 43,477.58. That's broken down, the budget is broken down to 18,500 of active Ramsgate, 15,000 for active Ramsgate activities, 25,000 for the town promoter and 2,000 for the website. They have no recommendation for any increase, I haven't got one here anyway. So I would, hmm, I can't make a recommendation because they haven't made one, but I would have thought that's not going to be enough if they really get going. If they've already spent 43,000 this year and we haven't been done very much. I, I'm wondering whether.
Okay, we understand what you're saying, there's no recommendation at the moment for an increase in this budget.
No, of course.
Yes, I appreciate that, can you mute yourself please, Richard?
Sure.
Thank you. Chair of that committee, that's councillor Green, would you like to say anything on this particular issue?
Yes. I'm not recommending any increase in the budget other than for the use, which is not expenditure that we will occur immediately, but only if we decide to go ahead with it beyond the first year trial that we've negotiated. But it will occur in next year's expenditure. I've asked Richard to have a look at the contract they're proposing, but he hasn't come back to me yet.
Okay, so that's on the chair of the committee who recommends that there is no increase this year. There's always monies that we can wire over if necessary. So I'm proposing from the chair that the, the budget for town promotion remains at 60,500 pounds. Is there a second up?
Could I speak, Peter?
Now, who is?
It's councillor Wing, I can't, I can only see Rashawn, I'm afraid.
Okay, councillor Wing, yes, you can speak.
Well, if we, if, nobody's going to go abroad anytime soon and I know we spoke about this at TDC and I really do think that we have to work with the community and with TDC to get our beaches and our facilities up and running. Because I think we need to exploit the fact that most people will be doing staycations. So we could end up at some point, hopefully, touch wood with a prevailing wind, with large numbers visiting our shores. And I just think we need to, we need to maybe allocate some, some, some backup money to that budget so that we can help, help our town exploit the numbers of people coming in. And we need to do that alongside TDC and the community to really get things clean and tidy and looking as smart as they can when people arrive, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you very much, I think the reality is there, we'd have to work closely with the ethnic district council, who have the responsibility for the roles that you just mentioned. However, it was underspent by 16,500 pounds this fiscal year. So there's a 16,500 pound headroom for next year, in next year's budget if we remain the same. So I don't necessarily feel we need to increase the allocated amount. However, should there be a draw on this particular monies, and this is insufficient, then I'm sure the chair of this committee can come to the financing general purposes or full council and request extra monies for these particular circumstances. Okay? So, anybody against the proposal to remain at sixty thousand five hundred for town promotion?
Just confirm, Chair, I did second that motion for you, councillor.
Yeah, seconded by councillor Ruszeki. Is anybody opposed to re, for the budget to remain sixty thousand five hundred? No, that's agreed unanimously then, sixty thousand five hundred for, uh, town promotion. Uh, visitor information centre, Richard.
Yeah, uh, budget last year twelve thousand, we've only spent six hundred ninety-seven eighty-one. The budget recommendation, the recommendation from the town promotion committee is twelve thousand again, so no increase.
Again, there's a recommendation for no increase in the V I C, uh, uh, budget. Uh, I propose from the chair, is there a seconder? Councillor Piper is seconding, I notice. Uh, anybody wish to debate this particular item? We now move on to events funding, Richard.
The budget for this year is seventy-two thousand five hundred, current expenditure seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven, uh, and out of which also fifteen thousand is set aside for the Royal Harbour, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, the recommendation is from the town promotion committee is to the budget to remain at seventy-two thousand five hundred, no increase.
Okay, members, there's another recommendation for no increase. So the event funding remains at seventy-two thousand five hundred. Uh, I propose from the chair, is there a seconder?
Seconded councillor.
Seconded by councillor Ruszeki. Um, do members wish to debate this particular agenda item?
I, I would, Peter, it's councillor Wing, just like what I just said, once we get up and running, hopefully when we've got this little bug under control, uh, we need, we need to make sure that we can support as many events, they'll probably be smaller because I can't see an Addington Street revival fair, for example, running this year, but we certainly would like to put lots of, uh, smaller events on that try and attract people into the town to spend money basically and get our town, our, our town back up and running and create employment opportunities. So I think maybe there should be a flexible approach to that one as well.
Yeah, there's always a flexible approach to all these budgets, these only notion allotments of monies, some, a lot of them have been, nothing has been spent at all. So if there's an overspend, uh, the chair of that particular committee can come to the, uh, F and G P or the full council, as I said before, and ask for extra monies for a particular purposes. So it's been proposed and seconded that there's no increase to seventy-two thousand five hundred. Uh, is anybody opposed to that? No, so that's unanimously agreed, seventy-two thousand five hundred. Council grant funds, Richard.
Yep, budget for last year, well, this year, thirty-five thousand for the Ramsgate Fund. We so far have spent eleven thousand four hundred and six sixty-two, um, and there's also eight thousand pound for ward funding, which was three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven. The ward funding is something, as you know, chairman, um, is renewed annually, uh, at the annual, uh, town council's, um, um, meeting in May. So we can forget about that, but we have to put something in there, it'll either be ward funding or it'll be expenses. Um, so that will add, that adds up to forty-three thousand together. Um, the recommendation, there is no recommendation committee, so therefore, uh, it must remain zero percent, uh, thirty-five thousand and eight thousand.
So do we agree to the, uh, members wish to discuss this particular agenda item? Thirty-five thousand for the Ramsgate Fund and eight thousand for ward funding. Anybody wish to debate?
Chair, I'd like to make a comment to councillor Ruszewski.
Yes.
Uh, just, uh, on, uh, ward funding, as we came out of Covid, it would be handy to have an increase in that, uh, to help our individual wards, uh, come, uh, maybe in the summer or afterwards, when, 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 uh, we might be out of, uh, this lockdown and, and maybe tier four, tier three down to tier two. Um, so if we can bear that in mind, um, should we need to increase the funding now for the May meeting, uh, then I would like to suggest an increase now. If we can wait till the May meeting, then I'm quite happy for it to...
Yeah, all this will be, uh, decided at the May meeting, these are only recommendations from F and G P. Uh, what is it at the moment, deputy town clerk, how much does each particular member get per annum?
You get five hundred pounds, chairman.
Five hundred pounds.
Rolls over to the next year as well, it's the rolling, um, fund for you.
All monies that aren't allocated to each ward member rolls over until you get to the end of the term, and any monies that are not spent at the end of the fourth year goes back into the reserves. So we're not that, we're not that position at the moment. So at the moment, ward councillors are allowed five hundred pound per annum. Um, is there a recommendation to full council that that should be increased, remain the same? I'm open for members to term, determine.
Uh, councillor Wing here, I'd like to support that and I'd like to recommend that it goes up to a thousand, we double it for one year only.
We can't do it for one year, you just do it for this year. I mean, you know, it's, you want to increase the councillors', uh, ward funding to a thousand pounds per, for member?
Yep, I could, I could use that promoting central harbour.
Good, yeah.
I want a seconded.
Right, there's a seconded by, so it's proposed by councillor Wing and seconded by councillor Roshan, uh, councillor Ara, sorry. Um, anybody wish to debate this particular item? Councillor Piper.
Um, just in the eyes of the public, although we call it ward funding, it is officially councillors' expenses and we took a decision to not receive it ourselves and to give it for ward improvements and so on, but officially it is our expense account. I think the average person in the street, unless they were well versed in the activities of Ramsgate Town Council, uh, expenses fund, would think that we are awarding ourselves a one hundred percent pay increase. Um, so if any increase of that nature is, is made, we really do need to make sure that the public know it is not an expenses increase for members, because we couldn't possibly justify such a huge increase. And bearing in mind that come May, with the attractive figure of a thousand pounds, there might be enough of us who decide, you know what, I think I'll have that. So, um, the option is there. Uh, so I would not want to support a doubling of the allowance, but I do note that in the six years I've been here, it hasn't increased at all. So I would be amenable to a much smaller increase of, say, fifty to a hundred, um, were that to be acceptable to, to members. Thank you, Chair.
Well, okay, I agree, uh, that may be the case, but, but it's been proposed and seconded to, to double it to a thousand. Anybody, and if that falls, other members can come in with their own proposals. But at the moment, it's, it, there's a proposal on the table from councillor Wing, uh, to councillor Albin.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I, I don't think that's necessary. I, I don't support a dou, a doubling of the, of the, the fund. Uh, a small increase, as councillor Piper said, I would, I would support that, but I can't support a doubling of it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you councillor Albin, anybody else wish to partake in the debate? You've got a hand up councillor Hetherington, a little orange hand, do you want to speak?
I'd like to, I'd like to speak, Chair.
Councillor Linda Piper?
Yeah. Um, I, I don't think the pre, I don't think this needs to go up, uh, to a thousand pounds, six hundred max, we can probably justify that.
Okay, well, as I say, if this particular proposal falls, then others can put their new proposal forward. At the moment, it's a thousand pound, that's the proposal, and it's been seconded. I'm now going to the vote, which is extremely difficult. Okay, I'll go to the ones I can see first. Councillor Piper.
Uh, I object.
Councillor El, hold on, I've got to write these down. Councillor Stuart Piper.
Against.
Ca, oh, councillor Nixey. I can't hear you councillor Ruszeki.
Sorry, for?
Yes, uh, for. Now, now, I, I can't see anybody, councillor Green.
Against.
I'm against. Councillor Wing.
For.
Councillor Ara. Is there anybody who haven't called? Who's at the meeting?
It's me, councillor Hutley.
Councillor Hutley.
I'm against, thanks.
Anybody else?
Councillor Hetherington.
Hetherington?
Abstain.
Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, against, three, four, two abstentions. It falls. I'm now open to a further proposal if required.
Propose one hundred pounds, thank you.
An increase from five hundred to six hundred has been proposed, is there a seconder? Ca, seconded by councillor Stuart Piper. Debate. Is anybody opposed to the increase of one hundred pound per member for ward funding from five hundred to six hundred? That's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, Richard, we now go on to decorative lights.
Right, chairman, you've still got, you haven't done the overall budget, so are you, you've increased, you've now increased the expenditure by another, uh...
Well, all right, hold on, hold on, then remain at the Ramsgate Fund to remain at thirty-five thousand for next year.
So, and you haven't got a seconder for that?
I know, I'm proposing it.
Yes, I know.
Seconded by councillor Hetherington.
Right, okay.
Does anybody want to debate? Anybody opposed to this particular recommendation? Then that's unanimous. We now move on to decorative lights.
Yes, thank you, chairman, uh, budget last year, well, this year, twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty, we so far we spent thirteen thousand, there will be another, another five thousand at least coming in, um, uh, because we're switching over to the summer lights. Um, the recommendation for amenities environment is a one percent increase to twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-five.
Okay, members, is there a proposer?
I'll propose that, Chair.
Oh, all right, seconder.
Second that, Chair.
Councillor Green seconds. Anybody wish to debate this item? Anybody opposed to this particular one percent increase? That's unanimous then, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-five pound for decorative lights. We now move on to town improvements. Town clerk.
Budget was sixty thousand this year, expenditure twenty-three thousand four hundred and forty-nine pounds sixty-six. The recommendation from the environment, amenities environment committee is to the, for budget to stay the same this year, no percent increase.
Okay, so there's a recommendation for no increase to the town improvements, remain at sixty thousand. I propose from the chair, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Stuart Piper. Uh, members wish to debate, please speak. Is anybody opposed to this proposal? Now that's, that's unanimous. Neighborhood plan, blimey, this is written on parchment with a quill pen, I should think, isn't it? Neighborhood plan.
The recommendation is for the budget to remain as it is, which is twenty thousand.
Right, okay, well, I, I'm going to propose the chair that remains the same, is, and is there a seconder?
Chair.
Hold on a minute, if there's a seconder...
I'll second it, Chair.
Seconded by councillor Albin, debate. Councillor Green.
Is that, is Richard proposing another twenty thousand?
No.
Or twenty thousand that have already reserved?
No, 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 there is no reserve fund, specific reserve fund for this, that we allocated twenty thousand last year, nothing was spent, so that goes, so nothing was spent. We're now putting monies aside again, twenty thousand, just in case, heaven forbid, we come up with a neighbourhood plan that needs money spent on it. So we're allocating twenty thousand on the exigency that there may be money spent. There's no another twenty thousand, this is twenty thousand.
Thank you, Chair.
Okey dokey, is anybody opposed to this twenty thousand? That's agreed unanimously. Uh, we now go on to restricted grant funding.
Yep, uh, we have, the Citizens' Vice, uh, received twenty thousand this year, um, and there will also be a rape crisis, um, which doesn't seem to be mentioned on nearby, that, that's also in there, so they, their money, so that, that would be, I seem to remember that's also twenty thousand, so, uh, the committee hasn't decided a recommendation on this, um, I think that's really down to the F and G P, but I think we need to, I think a zero percent increase, though I suspect the Thalick Citizens' Vice Bureau will need more money this year, uh, because I think there will be overloaded with, um, debt problems. The alternative is we can just not set anything on this, or we can set twenty thousand and leave it at that, and then come back and fire something if it's needed.
We're actually not setting anything here, is it just a recommendation to full council in May? I'm trying to suggest that we, uh, keep the monies at twenty thousand for both of these particular, uh, restricted grants. Uh, if they come forward within the intervening period between now and May, we can decide it at the full council. So I'm proposing twenty thousand for each of these particular grant funding. Is there a seconder?
I'll second that, Chair.
Councillor Albin seconds. Uh, debate. Anybody opposed to this particular proposal?
Ju, just a question, Chair.
Yes.
Don't we have to inform TDC a long time before May, what our precept's going to be?
We do.
That's the next bit.
That's, we will be, we, hold on, we will be determining our precept. It is very un, this is why the F and G P sits now for recommendations for full council. However, full council can alter the recommendations. This may have an impact upon our precept, but unless it's a dramatic increase, it won't do. We need to bear this in mind when we set the precept shortly.
Chair, sorry, it's councillor Ruszewski, uh, I got, uh, chucked out for the last two minutes. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I was looking for a, a proposed increase, I don't know if that's happened in the last two minutes, can you advise me?
There's no proposed increase to this particular agenda item, restricted grants budget, twenty thousand pound for each. There may be, uh, approaches from the Citizens' Vice Bureau to Ramsgate Town Council between now and the May, uh, uh, the May meeting. If there is, we can determine and discuss it at the May meeting to determine whether we should increase the actual allocation to Citizens' Vice Bureau.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, members, so is anybody opposed to remaining at the same for the time being? No, that's unanimously agreed, twenty thousand each is a recommendation. Right, we now move on to the precept. Richard.
Yep, uh, the tax place, that is the amount that one pound in the precept will raise from the town, last year raised eleven thousand nine hundred and eight pounds forty-one. This year, as I've said, because of discounts I think, it only raises £11,692, £690.32. So that's £300. Well, that's a ton of lot, but when you're talking about 20,000 dwellings, it adds up. So, if we stay on a 0% increase, we will be down nearly, well, just over £17,233. The, the deputy town clerk has given you options. Uh, on 1%, 2% and 3%. And I, as you can see.
Options of 1%, 2% and 5%.
Yes, 1%, 2% and 5%, but you can do versions or more or less, how do you think? If we work something else out, if you want to go incredible. Now look, 1% will raise you £933,000, which is still less than last year. £11,000 less. If we increase it by 2%, that's, that will actually raise £94,747, which is about a thousand pounds more than we had last year. And then if you go, the whole hog could do a KCC, uh, you get, with a 5% it raises by £970, so that's £30,004. So that's your choice. 1% is under, 2% is roughly the same as we've got now. Or we can go for 5% and increase and, and have £30,000 more. It's a choice to you. Or you can make whatever you like.
Richard, or anything in between, or even more if we choose to. Members, I'm waiting for members to actually inform the meeting of any proposals for an increase in the precept for next fiscal year.
I'd like to propose.
Look, I can't see everybody. If someone had say councillor Orban, I'd like to propose blah, blah, blah. So it's councillor Orban?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a 2%, increase chair, as I believe that's the right thing. Um, I think it, you know, it doesn't affect, uh, our residents too, too much, which is small increase. And I propose it chair, thank you.
Is there a seconder for that proposal?
Second that chair.
Oh Brianna, I second that.
Okay, well I'll have, is that councillor Young?
Councillor Young, yes.
Councillor Young, okay councillor Young. Councillor Young seconded it. Does any members wish to debate this particular proposal? Silence is golden. Are any members opposed to this proposal of a 2% increase in the precept for next year? Then that's unanimously carried. There will be a 2% of recommendation to full council of a 2% increase in the precept for next year. Okay. Agenda item five. Manon Thornhill allotment site.
Right.
Richard.
You have my report here. I, what I'm suggesting is, rather than we go through the report in detail, um, important thing is to decide whether this project goes forward or it doesn't. As you know, you've all received the valuation from Elgar's, the valuer I hired in to do it. Their valuation is less than what the vendor is saying, quite considerably less, a sum of nearly £68,000.
£6,000 less.
Yes. Why you need to decide is whether, how, whether this is, um, of what benefit you believe this to be to the, to the town and the community. And is the price that the vendors, uh, have struck, uh, fair and proper? Now, bearing in mind that you did agree in principle on that basis before, it's just turned out the valuation is less than we thought it would be. In terms of value to us, it doesn't really matter because we're never going to sell it. So whether it, it's worth less or more is not, is immaterial. The other thing we ought to, we will consider is can we get this land anywhere else in Ramsgate at this price? And I would suggest to you that's unlikely. Uh, I've given you the prices of development land, it's around about a million pounds an acre. So it will cost us, just over a million pounds, it will cost us £16 million to buy a piece of land like this within the boundaries of Ramsgate. I think that's impossible. We'd never raise that sort of money. So you've really got to decide. And I think this is the only thing you need to decide now is, and then we can, if you do decide to go ahead, and I can go through the report, is whether you're going to go move forward or you're not.
Thank you very much. I think we need to consider this alongside other projects. In my view, I'm not opposed to this, but I think we need to consider it against the monies we're going to have to borrow for Radford House regeneration. Any proposal for a beach club in Ramsgate, that's going to have to be funded, and there may be loans, they will have to borrow money for that. Uh, there's a considerable amount of money that's going to have to be borrowed for this allotment site. Um, it is, as I said, £68,000 above the valuation. If we don't take any notice of the valuation, I can't see a point of having a valuation in the first place, that costs us £688, but by the by. It does matter to us how much it costs, because although we're not going to sell it on, we're actually going to spend money buying it. Um, is it prudent for us to actually spend this money on an overvalued, uh, plot of land that's overvalued by the, by the, by the vendor? Now, members, please, please enter into debate on this particular item, bearing in mind the other projects we have in mind in train as well. Anybody wish to speak on this?
I'd like to speak.
Councillor Albert.
Yeah, but don't just say me. Who is it wishes to speak?
Councillor Roszewski.
Councillor Roszewski, you're first.
Thank you, uh, chair. Just a quick thing on the valuation. I wasn't very happy with the valuation report. Not on the figures, but the fact they couldn't even get their acreage and their hectares, uh, correct. I think should someone value something for someone, they should at least get that correct. I would suggest another valuation from someone that can actually write a correct report. Thank you chair.
Councillor Piper.
Hold on, I just went and got some water. Okay, anybody else wish to speak? I'll just answer that councillor Roszewski, in the point is we're going to have to make a recommendation. This will be a considerable amount of borrowing, and don't forget, we've got, we've already come with our, uh, recommendation for our precept of only 2% increase. Please bear that in mind. Uh, councillor Linda Piper.
Thank you chair. I would just like to say I agree with your first comments. Um, I don't think this is a viable proposition at all, and I will vote against it.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Jane Heatherington.
Could I speak after chair? Great. Well, I mean, as we've put £210,000 aside for this anyway, and that, we don't seem to be coming in above budget on that. We've got a green, um, agenda here. This is about tree planting allotments, which we've got a huge waiting list for. I mean, I, I think that we need to, personally, I feel we need to move forward with this, and I think it represents quite good value for money. I know we've got other things to consider as well. But, um, I think that, um, we're not, this opportunity is not going to rise again. And that's quite clear from what Richard has written, um, and the various prices of land locally.
Okie dokie. Uh, councillor Green.
I think financially chair, just. Financially chair, this, this stacks up. I don't, with the interest, current interest rates so low, low. I think an investment in land like this couldn't be bad for the council, couldn't turn out bad for the council. My doubts are, and I don't see we've got any way of establishing this, but how popular this development would be to people running allotments, whether they would want to travel to this site to, to run their allotment. And also how the local council in that area would, would, would feel about it. Now, people having to travel to the allotment, a reasonable distance, certainly gates the green nature of, of, of what we're about. So I may have doubts about it, not because of the financial transactions, but because of just doubts about how popular it would be.
Members, anybody other, any other members wish to contribute to the debate?
Yeah, councillor Albert, please chair.
Councillor Albert.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I was against this from the start, I have to say. And, um, we've gone out and got a estimation of what the, of what the land is worth. And I think, uh, if you, if you're going to go with it, you go, we go with the estimation. With it, I can't, I can't see why, why we were hung up on thousands and thousands of pounds more. For something, and I totally agree, David, councillor Green said exactly what I said at the, uh, when we first talked about, uh, gaining this land. Um, I'm just totally against it anyway chair, so, thank you.
Councillor Wing here, uh, I mean, I've taken on. Thank you chair. Uh, I mean, I think we have a green agenda, and I think it would be quite useful to have our own bit of land that we could, uh, obviously use to, use to help support the people that are on waiting lists for allotments. Uh, there's also a lot of mileage in mental health in relation to gardening. But I do accept the other points about the underestimation, 60 grand is an awful lot of money, it's not a few, a few thousand. And also whether those people would actually travel out that way. So I guess what I think should happen is that we go back to the landowner to see if we reduce the price. And while we're doing that, investigate the 400 people on the waiting list to see if they would travel out of Ramsgate to a plot of land without telling them where it is. Uh, there just needs to be a bit more investigation about whether it would be viable, I guess. But I'd love to see us buy more land and protect it from building, full stop.
Okay, I've got councillor Young, and then I've got councillor Stuart Piper.
Councillor Young, I feel it's a good idea to go back and find out if they will take a lower price, um, as it's overvalued. And as I say, find out how many people would be prepared to go that distance to the allotment. Otherwise, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you councillor Young, councillor Stuart Piper, and then councillor Jane Heatherington.
Thank you chair. Um, I kind of agree with the concerns that councillor Green has, and also councillor Orban. I, I think at first look, you think, well, yes, this is a good idea, but this could be, in a sense, a little bit like a money pit. It's a lot of money to throw into a, a project for a relatively small number of people to gain direct benefit from, even though the tenants would change over the years. I think with the commitments we've already got, not least with Radford House, and our desire to really try and get the town up and running again after this pandemic. We've got other things that should take the money, and maybe this can be revisited, if not this site, another site in two or three years' time, when we're really back up and running. And certainly when we, when we know we've had to sink into Radford House and other things. So to be honest, I think if the town clerk says we've got to decide, do we go with it or don't we? Uh, my vote would be don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Heatherington.
Well, it just, sorry, it just seems very unlikely to me that we're ever going to get this opportunity again. Um, so that's why I'm very keen for us to go with it. Because, you know, land at the moment, it's not exactly something that we can acquire easily. And with, from the point of view of people traveling to allotments, I was talking this subject with a friend who's been trying to get an allotment in Margate for years. I think, you know, people are very keen to get to an allotment, and most people already drive to their allotments anyway. Um, locally, uh, in my experience, with the number of cars you see at the allotment sites down by the roundabout. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, councillor Ara, do you wish to speak?
Yes, chair, thank you. I just want to ask, if we don't use this, um, land for allotment, is it, can we use for any other purposes for Ramsgate Town Council? I think it's a very good value for money, but I do see it is quite out of the term.
The problem would be that if we agreed to purchase the land for allotments, we have to set the site up for allotments. Yeah, which means, uh, considerable, because it's £213,000 at the moment, I think it is, for the actual purchase of the allotment site, but that doesn't end there. Then you've got to fence it off, then you've got to set up the allotments, then you've got the, the water, then you've got the electric. This will be a thick end of £500,000 to set these sites up, this one site. Please bear that in mind. Anybody else wants to speak? Then I'm going to go to the vote on this. Okay, again, I'm going to have to go through a lot and see. Councillor Orban.
Yeah, against going with it chair, thank you.
Councillor Heatherington. You're muted councillor Heatherington.
Sorry, I thought I'd unmuted. I'm foregoing with it.
That's yes.
Yes.
Councillor Ara.
Trying to, uh, against.
Sorry, sorry. Say that again.
Against.
You're against. Councillor Young.
I'm for it, yes.
Councillor Stuart Piper.
Against.
Councillor Linda Piper.
Against.
Councillor David Green. Four. Um, can you mute your tablet? That's it. Uh, who else is there? I can't see.
Councillor Wing abstain.
Sorry?
Councillor Wing abstain.
Councillor Roszewski.
Yeah, councillor Roszewski is for.
Councillor Huxley.
Against, thanks.
I'm against. Is there anybody else that I haven't spoken to who hasn't voted? There's six against, four, yeah, four, and one abstention. So the proposal falls. We do not buy it. The allotment site, that's the proposal. Okay, town clerk. Agenda item six, human resources, health and safety policy. Town clerk, are you there?
Yep, yep, I'm here with you chairman. Um, at the last extra meeting of the FNGP, uh, this was presented to us. And it works out to around about under £4,500 a year. What it will do is I've go through all our contracts, all our human resources, um, issues. And even more importantly, go through all our health and safety policies. Um, I think the presentation was very, um, clear, and it was most impressive. I think you were impressed with it chairman.
I was.
And, um, all we need to do now, because it's an FNGP matter, is to agree either we're going to go with Ellis Witten or we're not. This is just a, you know, it's a, again, a, a green or red button on this one.
Okie dokie, well I propose that we go with this company. Is there a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that chair councillor Albert.
Seconded by councillor Orban. Do members wish to debate this agenda item? Is anybody against the proposal? That's agreed unanimously then. Thank you. We now move on to agenda item seven, Radford House.
Uh, yeah, it's not only Radford House, it's just a run through of the various proposals. And I shall quickly run through it. Radford House, the pre-application documents are all in place. I've been on to, um, uh, TDC planning. There was some hoo-ha about the planning portal was giving the money back, and then they found, TDC say they haven't, so as far as I know, the application is done. Uh, the case officer has required two extra papers and the. the architect is actually providing them. I am in contact with the Architectural Heritage Foundation, and they'd offered us a go at £100,000 fund for bringing the project further on. It's got to be in by Sunday, so I'm going to have to work crazy tomorrow to get that in place. They just want the various bits and pieces that we've already done and put it together. I will see where that comes through. There were, I have consulted with Historic England to take up the, I will consult with Historic England to take up their offer on the other forms of funding. It may be, I'm sure that we're going to, you know, we need to, the target for the conversion is about £500,000. It may be, we may be lucky in finding a good bit of that from various different sources. I'm not sure where the AHF is going to come up with all the money we want, or even a large part of the money we want, but I think possibly with them and Historic England, I can't, I really, if I, if I make an estimate, it'll be a, it'll be a hostage to fortune, but I am hopeful that we, that we won't have to borrow £500,000. All right?
Okay.
Then we move.
Hold on, hold on. Members, any questions for the town clerk? Any comments?
Yes, please, Chair.
councillor Green.
Maybe it's just me, but I would feel a lot happier about this if we had some definite proposals for how we're going to use this building. We're in danger of going through, in my opinion, our whole council term, and not really seeing the public making great use of this building. And I just hope that somebody, somebody has got some idea of what exactly we're doing. I assume the previous council had a clear idea of what it wanted to do when it started this process, but I haven't seen it yet.
Chairman, can I just reply to that, in the sense that you've got a report from Counter Culture with a whole load of proposals in there. In that, if you read that document, you will see what they have, what they believed will be the future of the council, the future of the, of Radford House. And it's in part during the day, it will become a sort of like a workstation, various different places like that, and in the evening it'll be for community, but various community things. I can assure you, I mean, I was almost beating them back before the, before Covid, that various people wanted to use it. It is being used for the community now. It may not be used for the purposes that we originally envisaged. It was never meant to be a warehouse and all the rest of it in base, but it will be used. I can, I can assure you that there will be full public use of the place. It's just a matter of how, what these will be. But I, I mean, every day I get people asking about, well, when this all comes, you, when it, when Covid ends, can we use it for this? Can we use it for that? And can we use it for the rest of it? There will be plenty of uses for it, and I can assure you that. There is no other community hub in the town, and it's a big town, does not have anything.
councillor Young.
Just a second. Just a second. councillor Young.
Hi, I have a question. Um, town clerk, what was it, when the repairs were going on across the road with the police station, there was a lot of their materials alongside Radford House. Did they, did they contribute any money to us, for you?
Yes, they did. Yes, and, yes, councillor Young, an agreement was reached with the developer of monies received, but we don't say a lot about it because the favela gave us some of it. Right. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, we, we reached an agreement.
I lip to the field.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to contribute to this particular debate on Radford House? Right, that was just an update. We now move on to project proposals. Beach Club and Marina Car Park Site.
Yeah. Radford House, as I've said, we've discussed, as I've said, the status is we're awaiting plan commission and funding application.
We've done Radford House. It's just a beach club.
A beach club. We, some outline drawings have been done, which councillor Green has seen. I'm not sure what I circulated around, but I will do. And we're waiting from some, we're waiting report from the consultants employed by TDC, and a decision from TDC on the future use of the land. I mean, you know, we're in the same boat here as we will be, as we were with the allotment site, is that we could get it valued, and it may, may not go anywhere near that. I have no idea what, what, how much TDC are wanting for it, and I don't know when, when, when the consultants are going to finish their report. That was about.
Okay, so we're waiting for a consultant report from TDC. That's the update. Okay, don't we move on now to Albion Gardens?
Chair.
Yes, councillor Green.
Um, the cabinet member involved, Ruth, is arranging a meeting for me with, with the head of estates, because the estates are leading on this for TDC, to find out the exact status of the consultant's report, when we will be getting it, what the problem is with it, because it's gone backwards and forwards between the consultant and TDC officers. That should happen either next week or the week after, and I'll report on that.
Thank you very much, councillor Green. councillor Young, can you put your tablet on mic? I'm mute, please. Thank you.
councillor Wing would like to speak.
councillor Wing.
I, I mean, we have terrible problems. There is, there are large pots of money that we could go after all over the place, but while ever you've got TDC as the landlord of, or ownership of land or places, it's very difficult. We know there's £4 million going begging for the skate, skate, skateboarding facilities because it's part of the next Olympics. We're stumbling with TDC because we can't get them to give us an officer to work alongside people in the community that know how to put these bids together. I myself have brought £500,000 in through Charlton, and using Charlton as, as, as the, as the, as the statutory body that applies. So, I think it's a very good thing that we start taking ownership of our own pockets of land, because then we can start going after these, these pots of money, many of which are being lost to Thanet, because there is no, nobody to support us or to be that link to the, the local authority or the parish that could put these, that would be the sort of the awarding, the grant-making body bit. So, I fully support anything that involves us taking control of things, and then we've got our own destiny.
Thank you very much, councillor Wing. We now move on to Albion Gardens, which is awaiting resolution between RTC and TDC over the fees. Still no official response from TDC. So, we're still awaiting a response from TDC on that. Ramsgate Market. Britain.
Yes, Chairman. I had an email this evening from TDC Estates. They are holding back on issuing a prospectus, they're waiting for lockdown to end and do it to then. I have sent everybody an email and a copy of the email that I was sent, so you've had it directly off the, hot off the press, as it were. So, we're awaiting the prospectus from them. Simple as that.
Members wish to question the town clerk on that?
Look, councillor Wing here, I'd just like to say that the last three items are all being held up by TDC Estates. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, we know. Thank you very much. Expansion of decorative lights layout.
Yeah, this is, this is just early at the proposal stage. I haven't even had to work anything out, but I would, I'm suggesting that we don't have, in the, at Christmas time, when the lights are really in their height, we have a situation where you've got lights in the harbour, you've got lights in the town, and there isn't really a joining up between the two. And I'm wondering, I'm looking at various sites and whether we should think about expanding our decorative lights estate. It will cost more money, so we'll probably need, A, a capital sum, and then it will need to increase the, obviously, the revenue side of things eventually. And I am also thinking of just talking to TDC about the management of the, what you call the sturgeon lights, what we call the, I think you call them the dolphin lights, along the Royal Harbour. The very odd thing about it is, even though the entablature and the roadway is owned by KCC, the lights, by some magical thing, are, are owned, well, I don't think they're owned by TDC, but they are TDC's response. Those lights haven't even had a paint job done on them in the last 12 years, let alone much in the investment. And I, I wonder whether we should take them in hand. I know it's, goes against the grain to take on yet another piece of TDC's neglected work, but I just wonder whether we should think about that. And this is all I'm saying here. I'm going to come back to you with a proposal, if you'll let me do it.
Members, comments, please? Well, I think it's a jolly good idea. Yes, you have my permission, and I think the council's permission to come forward with your proposals. councillor Linda Piper, and then councillor Jane Hetherington.
I, I think we should go ahead with the improvements, take it on board. Let's have the place looking really good.
Thank you councillor. councillor Hetherington. Are you giving up councillor Hetherington? Do you wish to comment?
Sorry, sorry, Peter, I've had a lot of difficulty unmuting myself on the iPad, that was the problem. Anyway, I was just going to agree with Linda, so it doesn't really matter. I agree with what Linda said, so.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Yes, Chair, I think councillor Ara, I think Richard, he should go with your proposals if everybody agrees. I support you.
Okay, then, town clerk, to come back with a report on the linking of the town lights with the harbour lights. Anybody opposed to that particular proposal?
Chair.
councillor Green.
As long as it's restoration of the dolphin lights and not decorating them with Christmas-type lights.
Oh, no, 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 we're not suggesting to stick twinkly lights around the dolphin lights, no. That's not, well, all I'm suggesting is the town clerk comes back with a proposal, not authority to carry out the work. So, he can come back with a proposal, and then we can make a decision as to whether we wish to move forward, with full costings, of course. Thank you very much.
Perhaps seek, seek a grant too at the same time.
Yes, if there's monies available, grants are always, yeah, always worthwhile, and certainly, I'm all in favour of them. Okay. Financing projects and proposals, I don't know what that is. Town clerk. You're mute, Richard, you're mute.
Sorry, Chairman. Right, Lawrence Spurkard, the last thing, it had been intended to take over the responsibility from TDC and manage the church, a sensitivity in line with a management plan that, remember, we funded with Kent Wildlife Trust, and it's been very successful. I have put this on hold. I had put, I've put the technicians up there to do some work, but I'm not doing any expenditure because they want us to prune some trees and various other things, simply because we can't get an agreement out of Albion until we get an agreement of Albion Gardens. I really don't think it's right and proper that we should spend money on TDC's responsibilities until they are prepared to be reasonable and talk to us. I'm not even getting anything from them. In the confidential bit, there is a letter, and I want permission to send it.
Okay, hold on. Any questions for the town clerk on what he's just said?
Yeah, chairman, councillor Albert, chairman. Chairman, I should have said it earlier, I have contacted Rob Large in TDC Estates, who's the acting director of our Albion Gardens. I have asked him specifically to provide Ramsgate Town Council with how much the council wants to charge for their legal fees, because the town clerk told me, he'd never been told that, so I'm chasing that. I expect to get a result from that within the next few days. And I've also done the same about Ramsgate Market, Chair. I've also contacted them to give us a clear and decisive way forward that TDC is going, because I've told them if they don't do anything, then Ramsgate Town Council will look to make its own proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Albin. I'm now going to confidential items, two of them. I'm going to propose a two or three-minute comfort break. Certainly, I need it.